scroll on.
I'll confirm what Jack has is.
Hmm.
Come everybody to the July 28th, 2025, Rayler City Council meeting. And I would now ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Ring.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Counselor Randall.
Present.
Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Mayor Mays.
Present. Item three is Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Councilman Scott Randall to please lead us in the pledge.
Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Randall. Item four, approval of the agenda. We do have one change to the agenda. We have one item added to our consent agenda tonight, which will be referred to as item 9D, which is authorization to award a contract for the library's HVAC project. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
McLaughlin was second.
The move by Counselor Richardson and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item five is a presentation by our Community Development Director regarding the First Street Project. Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor Mays. Counselors Joshua Chandler, Community Development Director and Urban Renewal Agency Manager. I'm going to bring a slideshow up here. I would also like to introduce who's on the screen, Paul Schmicki, Paul Schmicki with KPFF Engineering. He's not on the screen right now, I guess, but he's out there. It's all right, Amy. So Paul and I both really inherited this project at the same time in 2022, when I took over as Community Development Director. They had a transition in the project. Peter Craig with KPFF used to be part of it. So Paul and I really kind of started in on this project at the same time. Paul and his team at KPFF have really been exceptional throughout this whole process, actually. You know, unlike many consultants who focus on the bottom line, their team has really demonstrated a need to get this project done and a desire and a dedication to get this project done. They've answered countless questions, engaged in extensive detail reviews, evaluated alternatives. And most of our work together these past few weeks that I'll talk with past few months has been on some walls that are a part of the streetscape design out there. So the project has been, this project has been in the making for many years. We're carrying through with the legacy that was started nearly two decades ago. Tonight, we're going to walk through that story. We're going to cover the history and the legacy of First Street, the purpose and the urgency of this project, what's been accomplished, how we're addressing historic and archaeological considerations, timeline, and how this all ties into the greater vision for downtown and our waterfront. So the legacy of First Street, the First Street is really where the Dow's commercial story begins.
Presentation right now, so I'm not on camera.
He is on mic. It was the original commercial corridor of the Dow's and home to key landmarks like the Getchell Waldron Drug Building, the Baldwin Saloon, Wing Hall High Company Building, the former U Matilla House, which is the faded picture there on the bottom of the screen. And it's also part of the larger Chinatown district. So beneath the surface, First Street also houses one of the city's oldest water lines, which was actually in the ground in 1875. So to put it into perspective, we have that old historic fire wagon in our museum downstairs. This pipe is actually older than that fire wagon. So floods and fires historically have shaped the First Street area to combat flooding. The original street grade was raised. As a result, what were once first, the first floor of many of these buildings were actually effectively became the second floor. So many of the business owners down there had to retrofit their buildings to bring the grade up. This isn't, this is a common, this occurred in the Dow's in multiple locations around the Dow's. As commercial activity shifted to Second Street in the late 1800s, First Street evolved and really became the center of the Chinese community. One of the few surviving structures on this run on this straightaway is the Wing Hall High Building, which is located in the parking lots between Court and Washington Street owned by Eric and Jackie Gleason. By the 18, by the 1960s, many buildings had been destroyed or demolished by fire and were to never be rebuilt. So looking at this project, the First Street project, it was once the Dow's Riverfront Access Project. This project was contemplated in some form for nearly two decades. I did that ran the numbers since its inception, the city has seen 24 different counselors, five mayors, five community development directors, three city managers, and three public works directors. It's a long project. I think all of them had a part at one way or another in this project. The modern effort started here as the Dallas Riverfront Access Project. This spanned Union to Madison Streets. And also the original included the Washington Street Plaza and a rail freeway underpass. 2006, we initiated work with David Evans and Associates. At that time, preliminary estimates for this concept for these concepts ranged between eight and $12 million. 2007, the city secured $1.6 million in federal funds and brought KPFF onboard. So even with all the individuals that I mentioned up above, KPFF has stayed on with this project the entire time. And we received STIP funds, which is State Transportation Improvement Program Funds and a 2009 bond assisted to pay for this project. In 2015, 2016, those STIP funds were returned and the scope was scaled back due to rising costs. Still, the bond obligation remains and with it, we'd like to see this commitment through. So this is one of the, it's hard to see. Sorry about the scanned image there, but this was the design. So there was a couple of designs when we brought on David Evans and Associates to take a look at different ideas. So between this, there was three concepts effectively that we were, that we were considering at one point. And this was really the focal point, you could say of it. This was a massive undertaking here. This is, to put it into perspective, this is the Granada Theater. This is the blue building. So this is Washington. You would have dropped down and you would have went underneath First Street and then underneath the railroad, the freeway, and then you would connect to the Riverfront Trail, pretty elaborate. But this was effectively scaled back with the plan we have today. So current conditions, conditions along First Street have continued to decline. We're seeing blight, failing walls, sidewalks, public safety concerns, significant ADA accessibility barriers. Property owners and residents have waited years for progress. Further delays only increase both risk and cost effectively. We do not, we have not planned for projects to occur along First Street because we have waited for this project to move forward. So that's why you'll see some of the deterioration that we have out there. Taking a look at one of those areas, which is actually kind of a unique part of this project, really. It is one of the most challenging aspects here, and this is the sidewalk along, the sidewalks along the Baldwin Saloon. Here we have a hollow sidewalk with a vault space beneath that red area. So effectively their sidewalks are built on top of a metal decking, placed on top of steel beams. Those beams are corroding. The sidewalk is failing and sinking into the ground into this vault. To put it into perspective, a typical curb on the side of a road is a six inch curb. There's areas in this red that that curb is actually flush with the street itself. So that curb is actually shown a drop. That sidewalk has sunk in about six inches, at least in some of those locations. To go back on this really quick, as one of the more unique areas here, that's it's required that an alternative wall design comes in to play here. Typically, one of the thoughts would be to go in and fill this area with structural fill and then place your sidewalk on top of it, which would be common for most sidewalk construction. But after doing some geological engineering over here, they found out that actually that placing fill here would put too much charge against the building itself. Therefore, we might impact the structural integrity of the foundation. So it was elected to go back to another elevated sidewalk, if you will. And if you see on the design here, these little, little dots that go all the way around, those are piers that are going to be piled into the ground. And then from there, there's going to be a brand new metal decking and then from there sidewalks placed on top. So this area alone, due to uniqueness of it, resulted in some significant cost increases from the overall project scope itself. So sidewalk conditions, these are just a few. There are many, many more. If you've walked out there recently, they're in pretty rough shape. Here you see some real divots in the ground here, I think for years and years of people driving over that corner. Reason I show this here, it's kind of hard to show scale. That six inch curb I was talking about, this right here is about 16 inches. So it's a, you could easily trip and fall right off of that. And this is what I'm talking about, about that six inch curb that is now depressed onto the street itself. So this whole area is sinking, as I mentioned, into the vaulted area. These are the walls. We'll talk about the walls more, but you can see some significant cracking that has occurred on these walls. These walls are what hold up the sidewalk in the blocks between Union and Washington Streets. Like I said, hard to capture photos, but between Union and Court Street, the walls that are there are actually to the point that they are, are starting to lean in. So if you actually go down there, you can look at one of the buildings, that building is straight up and down, and that wall is really kind of encroaching in on it. So the walls are failing. So some project history, taking a look, really just in the last three years, that's when we kind of, we shifted, the project had, we re-scoped the project. And 2022, the city and ODOT mutually ended an agreement that we had due to mounting delays and, and rising costs. That move ultimately saved the city approximately $820,000, even after repaying $320,000 of grant funds that we had already spent. After that approval, ODOT actually waived that payment. So we did not have to pay the $320,000 back. So the idea with this was really at this, the shift in the history of the project was a reset. And this would be something that is rather than reviewing things through federal standards, which was required with the ODOT agreement. This is done in-house locally. Some of those requirements are no longer needed. Some of the delays we might be able to avoid. And really culminated in 2023, the city contracted once again with KPFF with a new project scope, about a half a million dollars. And this, you could say is when the First Street Project was born, and this is now a reduced scale between, between Union and Laughlin Streets. So this takes a look here. My apologies, there is a typo there. It is UP Railroad. But in all of this, this shows what we are, what we're talking about, what the First Street Project is. This image here was produced by Walker Macy. Walker Macy is the same group that is producing the Federal Street Plaza. So it was really nice to be able to incorporate the plaza into the overall scope. As you can see, it's going to be between Union and Laughlin Streets, streetscaping improvements, including planter bays with landscaping. There's going to be some benches out there, some streetlights. And the areas, we're going to talk about some walls in this area here, but overall this gives you the, the project area. Here's some side view elevations and what these are provided for is to show you really what segments of the road are going to be broken out here, you know, Union to Court. You can see the basic design here. One of the biggest shifts that you're going to see from the previous, from the current design to now is the shifting of parking. So parking is now currently on the railroad side. It is shifting to sidewalk facing side. What that's doing is that's creating an opportunity. So you have a travel lane here. That travel lane is going east. And then you have a protected bike lane. So that protected bike lane is going west, but on the, there will be what's called a share row. So that's an area where automobiles and bikes travel on the same line. So this kind of gives you an idea. This is in the Chinatown block with these walls that I was talking about. Here is, this block is most known for budding our public parking lots. And then here, a little bit further down, this was an area where the alleyway was actually, or the right away was tighter. So parking is actually back to where, you know, it's going to stay in the same location. And this is actually next to the hub building. That is basically what that block is. So this is kind of cool. This was provided to us, like I said, by Walker Macy. This will show you that before and after. And it's, this is looking at, that is right there at the corner of Court and First Street. So before and after, the existing and proposed, showing you what I was just talking about, the bike lanes and the shifting of parking. This is another example, but at Washington and First. So the current project, we are working through the archaeological coordination with SHIPO, long time. There's a lot of work that has gone into it over the years. This whole entire area, there's been a lot of work that's been done. SHIPO has let us know that it is, it's a well-known project in their office. We are in the process of completing, we are almost there, completing the right of way and easement acquisition. So right away, an easement acquisition. That effectively means we need to use portions of people's property to get on to do the work. And that's what we have been working with, purchasing those easements from individuals. I will be finalizing coordination with the railroad. And there's been some, in the recent months, updating and finalizing our plans with recent input from the Federal Street Plaza. As we've talked about before, these two, and we'll talk about a little bit more, these two projects are really going to be happening at the same time. So we need to make sure that some of the plans from some of the details of the First Street plans blend into the Federal Street Plaza. So we have a great opportunity now, instead of one finishing, you know, two years ahead of the other. We have that opportunity to finalize these plans and make sure that it's all accurate going in, and there's not going to be any missteps along the way. So regarding archaeological, this site is located within four designated archaeological zones. So you can see those in the red. The largest being right here. This is known for historically, this is the Chinatown block. In the research that we've done, the findings, our contracted archaeologist has found and submitted a report of adverse effect to historic resources. So effectively we will be, I'll get spoiler alert. We will be removing some walls. I'll touch on that in a little bit. And we are impacting the archaeological zones. So our finding is that that is an adverse effect, which requires some additional mitigation that we are starting the process with. SHIPO came out in June and walked the site with our team. And currently with actually ended Friday, there's some stakeholder engagement, part of this memorandum of agreement, meaning when you are going to create an adverse effect on on an archaeological zone, you have to go through mitigation in the process. So we're going to touch on that here. Mitigation, what we are proposing to do is just kind of some, you know, out of the mitigation really, I think, created some unique opportunities for details to add into First Street. So some of those include, right here, there's this metal door that's in the sidewalk. I'm sure you, everybody's walked by and seen it before. This actually provided freight down to the basement of, of a, of a saloon, I believe it was, that was right at that corner. This is down in, this is right at the corner of Court and First Street. So what our plan is, is we are going to remove this door, pave out a brand new sidewalk and then replace the door back into the planter strip of that sidewalk. So therefore we still have ADA clearance and that, and the door will be completely outside of the walking path. So it's able to kind of, in a way, relive history. It'll just be hot, you know, it'll be a blank piece, you know, blank gravel underneath it or whatever. It will, it won't open up to anything, but I think that was a cool way for us to, to blend that into the overall design. Also this building facade here, this is the remnants of an old building that will remain. There's, we are still in the process of making sure that it's stabilized as construction happens. The Gabian walls, which are walls, we're going to be talking about here in a little bit. They are going to have basalt that will be finished with basalt. They'll have a basalt face on them. There's going to be some interpretive signage out there. So trying to figure out, you know, this idea of a QR code, you know, technology is so fast all the time. We want to, we want to have something out there that, that we can use for years to come. 15, 20 years down the road, people can get additional information on the First Street project. And we just want to make sure that it's, it's a, something like a QR code. It's not going to be irrelevant in five years from now. So still working through that, but at the end of the day, there's going to be some, some information on where you can find additional details and documents about the First Street project. And then the plan is to stamp in the name for the DAOs, the Chinese name for the DAOs. I'm working with Eric Gleason to provide some symbols for that. So we're going to place those along the area, stamping them in. And there was also one I didn't include on here where there's been a request to cut out the corner, one corner of Court and First Street. That corner is coming out because it has some historic significance. So I'm working again with Mr. Gleason and trying to find a new home for that corner of concrete as it's not going to fit into our overall streetscape. So these are the walls that, as I mentioned earlier, Paul and I have been talking about these walls for, I don't know, the majority of the time we've been working on the project. These are really unique, very cool walls out there. These walls will be removed. In 2021, there was some structural analysis of the walls in that area, and it was recommended that the walls be removed. Part of the reason is, for instance, this right here, that is stacked rock, that is dry stack. So effectively it is in the name. It is rocks that are stacked on top of each other and a sidewalk is placed on top of that. So for us to get anywhere near guaranteeing the infrastructure that's going on top of it, as you can imagine, there's a lot of uncertainty with those stacked rocks. Also this down here, this is the section, if you're ever down there, this is where you can actually see this wall that is leaning into the sidewalk. So there was multiple options considered back in 2021 and Gabian walls were selected. At the time, between Gabian walls or a poured concrete wall, Gabian walls were actually most cost effective. And the Gabian wall design, as I mentioned briefly, that is going to include a front basket, they're basically baskets full of rocks. The front half of the basket is going to have some basalt in it to make it look like these dry stacked rocks that we currently have out there. This is the location in red of the areas, the walls that will be removed. And here is a detail of what they look like. We don't have to get too far into the engineering side of things, but these are the walls. They're going to have a little bit of an offset as you, as you go up. But right here, this little portion here shows where there's going to be variation of, of, of basalt rocks that go into, like I said, this like dual basket system. But over here is an example of a Gabian rock wall design. So cost estimates, these are just estimates. But the, you know, taking a look at it, at the end of the day, the project has increased. I won't get into all of them, but the project has increased by about 5% from last year. We're sitting at about $6.92 million for this project. To put it into comparison, this is a very complex project. But to put it in comparison, I think the Public Works Director mentioned today that the new sidewalks going from Thompson up 12th Street is a $2 million project. So quite a difference between the two projects here, but there is some added costs. I believe the walls alone are a million dollars. So some budgeted funds we have, we've been slowly saving for this project for many, many years. In our Fund 18, we have $3.5 million. Urban renewal has $3.2 million set aside. These are both budgeted amounts. I put in here additional urban renewal funding is contingent on final plan approval. I should have said this in the beginning, this is, this project is a joint partnership between the City of the DAOs and the Columbia Gateway Urban Renewal Agency. The agency is very familiar with this project. I think many members of our board agree that this $6.92 million, just with today's, you know, the way projects go these days could be, could be much higher. So there may be some need for additional funding as we finalize everything. And the other thing to point out is we've already spent $1.5 million on this project and there's no construction to date. So it's much more than you would typically spend on the designing and planning phase of a project. It's only five blocks long. So some timelines here. Also, there's some uncertainty with our review currently at, with SHIPO, it's a SHIPO office. So I wanted to pad in some timelines here, but final documents are expected to be finished this summer. Bid and award happening fall 2025 to winter, this, this coming winter. Then construction is, you know, it's been my hope. And it looks like we are on track for it to happen, to occur sometime in the winter. But depending on what kind of weather we have, it could be starting a little bit later, maybe in the spring. And then it's about a year-long project to do this. And the reason we provided the timeline here for the Federal Street project is because we anticipate these two, and they will be happening at the same time. So what we are actually doing is we'll be launching it very soon. We have a web, we're going to have a webpage that it's talking about different projects, revitalization occurring in our downtown area. There's going to be information on the Federal Street Plaza, the First Street project. But we're also going to highlight the disruptions to people down in the area because our goal, at least at this point, is to close First Street in its entirety for that entire year. There could be some cost benefits to that instead of trying to phase it out. So we're already talking about potential modifications to our parking lots, for instance, because you know how our parking lots work out there on First Street. You drive on First Street and then you turn into our parking lot. So there might be some modifications so that we're not impacting those areas and trying to keep business operations moving in the area the best we can because we understand this is going to be a large disruption. So this, connecting the pieces, this is something that I put together for the agency, I don't know, last year or so at the request of the board. What we're trying to show here is in the dashed red, the dashed red is the federal, is, is the First Street project. And I, and I mentioned, you know, this is kind of at the beginning, you know, this, there's been this common goal and this common vision for so many years to connect our downtown to the river. You know, we're, but we're divided by a freeway. So we're, we've tried and we've, we've made investments on, on connecting all these pieces. So this is really a map that kind of shows, we have our second street, streetscaping that was done early 2000s. Before that, the very first streetscaping project actually was something that occurred on Federal Street. So that's why we included the Civic here. And if you think about the whole entire model, you will have, you know, someone can walk from the Civic and they can move their way all the way down to our maritime terminal. So it's, there's, there's a lot of connections here, a lot of possibilities, a lot of investments that have already been made. Some recent investments, at least on the, this speaks directly to the, to the public side because there's been countless investments with the Urban Renewal Agency's incentive program in our downtown area, but some to highlight here on the public side. The light capsule project, that's up in the upper right-hand side. If you haven't been over to the Waldron Drug, Getchell, Getchell Building, very cool. This is, was put on, this, this was completed by our, our previous rare and Moorhead. And it, and it shows three different billboards that used to be painted on this, our signs that used to be painted on the side of that building, really cool piece of art. The Tony's Building Site, there's a lot of movement there. Agency has invested a considerable amount of money on the Tony's site and we're hopefully going to be moving forward on some type of development here in the years to come. Federal Street Parking Lots, the, the Urban Renewal Agency took these parking lots. I don't know if you saw them, probably even just four months ago, they were in horrible shape. I don't think they were used as much as they could have been because they were just, I don't know, you might feel that your car was going to fall into a pothole. So we recently invested a good amount of money and redid some parking spaces out there. So 55-ish, brand new parking spaces. And then of course, everything we've been talking about in the past few months is the Federal Street Plaza, which is just this amazing project that's going to, everybody knows is going to take the place of this Federal Street hub here. And you know, as part of the reason I'm having this conversation with you today is I know that there was a lot of, there's been a lot of movement with the Federal Street Plaza. We had a town hall and there was all this like community engagement that went along with it. And it was, you know, there was this First Street project kind of in the distance that had been talked about. So one of the reasons to come back here is to talk to you, to, to present this 20-year-old project to you as if it's brand new. But that was kind of the intent here is to kind of live, you know, freshen it up a bit, you know, blow the dust off and, and knowing that this is happening so close and both myself and Paul are pushing to the end to make sure that we can make the First Street project happen. So moving forward with purpose, there is many reasons why we should do the First Street project. But you know, one of the goals is to live around the agency, the Columbia Gateway Urban Renewal Agency's mission to eliminate blight and boost property values. The goal is to complete a key major project before the agency district sunsets in 2029, honor the bond obligations and build on funds already invested. As I mentioned, $1.5 million has already been invested in the project. Avoid future cost increases with timely action. We've already seen a 5% increase from last year. And then capitalize on a decades-old vision of downtown revitalization and riverfront access. I'm hopefully going to be the one that takes this thing across the finish line, but I am nowhere near the beginning of where this all started. And I just want to thank everybody that I mentioned earlier, so many, so many people that have come and been part of this project and have had that vision to carry this vision through. And just excited to see it happen here in the, in this next year. Some basic photo credits here for you and happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Chandler? Counsel Ryan, you're muted. You're muted, Rod.
Hang on.
There you go, you're on.
I'm on. I noticed, I'm looking at page 12 of 125 on your printout and looking at the, each of the blocks, I see the yellow line going along on each one and then about halfway up to the alley probably. So I'm assuming that area, for example, in front of Laughlin, so that, that's going to be improved as well. The street, Laughlin Street from the alley to the First Street project?
Yep, yep, that's correct. So when we did the Second Street project, it, it connected, it, it did streetscaping all the way up to the alley. So this would be budding up against that.
So my question is that I happen to know the current building owners and whatnot. For example, on what was the Sedition Building, it was found by Jim Swineoff, who used to work for the city, that the building property line is actually across the sidewalk and towards the middle of the street. So have easements been gotten already or is that still in process? What's, it's because it's not, the street is not all city property, it turns out, from the way it was laid out, I guess, 100 years ago or something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I jump in?
Yep.
Hi, Counsel Ryan, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, the city's been in the process of coordinating with real property owners abutting East First Street, right downtown, right in the project area. I don't know if Josh, can you still share your screen? Do you want to show the project area one last time?
Page 12.
Page 12 in your packet, according to Mayor Mays. This has been a very lengthy process. The city has consulted with right-of-way acquisition consultants whose sole existence, as far as the city is concerned, is determining condemnation appraisal values and coordinating with the property owners to ensure that the city received all land entitlements and access rights as needed to support both the wall and the construction of the wall and, and on a temporary and a permanent basis in varying cases. By and large, the downtown property owners on East First Street that the city was engaging with have been coordinating directly with the right-of-way consultants or with the Community Development Director, in some cases with the city manager's office and in some cases with me. And I would say generally, most of the real property owners have agreed to, to the city's appraisal values and easement terms without, without any real issues. But it's, it like, like Josh just mentioned, this project has been going on for a number of years. And so I think everybody's pretty anxious about getting it all wrapped up.
Yeah, and it wasn't just that street. I think a lot of them probably have some older property lines than just five, six years ago, the city thought the sidewalk in front of that particular building on Laughlin was city. And it turned out the city came back to the building owners at the time and said, no, actually, you're right. It's the building owners on the sidewalk and several feet into the street. So I was just wondering, you know, if that's likely on the other ones and if that's been reviewed and taken care of. Just putting it on the record that those were questions that I've had asked.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, can we take a look at the, the cost estimates on page 22 of 125, the packet? It says that on the left-hand column, it says it totals 6.92 million and the, the budgeted funds for 25, 26 only come to 6.7 million. And then the total spent to date is 1.5. Can we, is it possible to clarify if that, if the total date to spend is in addition to what the, the, the 6.9 million estimated? And then is, maybe there's just a little discrepancy between that, that 6.92 million on the left and the, the Fund 18 and, and Urban Renewal Funds for 6.7. I just want to clarify it for the record.
Yeah, so there, there is a discrepancy of the 3.5 and the 3.2, and that's, that's by design. Basically what this shows is, once we have a final number, I'll be working with the agency board about allocating additional funds to the project.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the 1.5, I can't touch on all of those. These were some estimates that I pulled on previous reports, apologies on that. I do think it, the 1.5 would be different entirely than the 6.9. 1.5 would be for previous planned work that had been done. And I was, you know, touching on like the project history, you know, we worked with David Evans and Associates. That was, that was one contract that we worked through. That was kind of the beginning contract and then we had worked through many others. I don't know how many plan sets that KPFF has put together. I've come across multiple that they've really, you know, we've, we spent a considerable amount of time and that's the money that I was mentioning is the 1.5.
Okay, okay. So yeah, over time, like the 1.5 was pre-worked to getting the project completed. So really that, like the 6.9 estimate would be project completion funds, if you will, not including the 1.5 million that's been spent today.
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
There's a follow-up. Would it, is it fair to say that that 1.5 million was paid almost exclusively to KPFF?
Oh, I wouldn't be able to touch on that, but I would, I would say majority.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions for Mr. Chandler? I have a few. I have a few. The sidewalk vault by Baldwins. There are other sidewalk vaults throughout the downtown, aren't there? Wouldn't you, or do you know?
I know at one point there were. I can't speak to all of them. I know with Public Works Director might be able to help me out on it, but I think when the street, the Second Street Streetscape Project happened, there were some that were removed at that time. I'm not entirely sure, though. But this is the only one in that segment.
Is there any common denominator as to whether those vaults are owned by the city or the private property owner?
I think they're effectively owned by the city because they're in the city's right-of-way.
Except, well, like in the case of the Rod's example, it might, the property line might be out in the street somewhere, but you know.
Yeah, and I would have to go back to the surveys.
It's all right.
Yeah, it was all new information tonight that I I could take a look. I do know that there is some right-of-way, there's basically a tax parcel that's owned like on Madison, like Madison and First is actually like a tax lot that is right in the middle of the road. But I would have to go back to look to see on the Laughlin side of things, so.
It's not necessary. As long as we know, on the, we're only concerned with this project right now. And that's all I'm concerned with, frankly. Removing parking from the north side to the south side of First Street, are we losing any spaces?
Oh, I don't have that number. Quick answer, yes. Yep, because I know there's just some additional like bull bouts and some landscaping bull bouts that are occurring, but I don't know that number off the top of my head. If it's, if it, if there is some, there's not a lot. Paul is chiming in here with his nod. We are losing some.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Do you know, do you know how many?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Maybe I, that is one thing I'd be interested in knowing. Good. Thank you. And then finally, maybe I missed it. Aren't we, isn't part of this project that one of the called an advantage or a feature is to tie in with our trail system?
Um, in the sense, yeah, in a way. So, on one of the images that I showed, kind of that connecting the pieces, there's been, you know, the Mill Creek, there, there's been a Mill Creek, I would say, at this connector that has been discussed before, and that would be a path. KPFF actually worked on that, some initial designs. That would be a path that goes behind the post office, right between the post op, right between that fence line and the rail. And that could be a connection to the Mill Creek Trail.
Okay.
Yep.
And one of the additional aspects of the Federal Street Plaza is it'll be home to one of the bike hubs that we've talked about previously. Other communities in the Gorge, Mosher, Cascade Locks, Hood River, Troutdale, all have a bike bike hub as part of the Columbia-Gorge Highway State Bike Trail. And so, this also will be a great connector piece, jump-off point from that downtown center plaza with the public parking lots there. You ride the bike lanes that Josh detailed during his presentation. You're able to hit the Riverfront Trail, which will take you to the Discovery Center, and then Route 30 and the rest of the state trail there. So, hopefully, it serves as that connector piece and allows our community to access that recreational amenity and then brings visitors into the heart of our downtown.
Thanks for adding to that. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Chandler?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Council Ring?
Thank you. Josh, I I don't recall the answer to this question, but I wanted to to ask it for for my own as well as everybody else. But was there, has there been any investigation or will there be any investigation in the use of Public Works for some of the work that needs to be done along First Street, as such as like underground things that replacing piping and things like that, for potential cost savings? Is there, is there any room for that in the in the project plan? And is Public Works able to to do any of that? And do do we know if it's going to save any money at all if we do that?
Yeah, so I think overall, some of the savings that you touch on, that's a great point. One of the breakouts is for construction admin services of $600,000. That is effectively having someone out there day-to-day monitoring the project. We think that we can, well, we know that our construction inspector would be able to be on-site, therefore, cutting down the need to have another consultant coming out and doing it. So, that effectively, that's 600,000 is in the event that we can't provide a staffer to the project. That's what they think for the entire life of the project. Some cost savings when it's concerning Public Works and assistance from Public Works. I don't know if it'd be much of a cost savings other than what I mentioned. Public Works won't be doing any of the work, so it's not like we could do any in-house cost savings that we may experience, like the event of when we did the parking lot just recently, we, there was a considerable amount of cost savings because we were able to do that project in-house. As far as breaking it out as to who's going to pay who, we've had had some, we've had some conversations about that. But at the end of the day, I think it was determined, you know, previous Public Works Director, that all along this has been an urban renewal project, all along the Urban Renewal Agency has committed to pay for it. So, that is why there has been a lack of investment on Public Works side of things to to fix anything out there, because it was known all along that it was going to be an urban renewal project. So, long answer there. I think it was determined, I I'd happy to check in on it again, that this would be paid for by the Urban Renewal Agency.
Sure, understood. And certainly, I think, you know, Urban Renewal is is certainly committed to to knocking out the First Street Project. And I think the the point I'm trying to ask is not necessarily whether or not the Public Works Department would put any funds toward the effort, rather than, you know, is there a cost savings? Like, like you mentioned, the the little over $600,000 for somebody to be there to observe and and do all of that day-to-day type activity? I think that's a good example of what I'm talking about, where it's still urban renewal funds. There's not something coming from, like Public Works money coming from like the street fund or water fund or something like that to help pay for this. But I was just thinking, you know, ultimately, is it cheaper to pay somebody from Public Works to do some of that work than to contract out to a third party to to do that, right? Because we, we certainly have the capability in-house to do that, some of that work, right? And I'm just, I'm curious if if there is any savings that we can realize there over time, over the life of this project, so that we can try and, you know, save some taxpayer money. That's all.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, it's a great point. And I think that is, you know, that when we get the overall cost for these, it doesn't consider whether or not the the city can contribute some some staffing time that goes into it. You know, some of that would be associated with not only the development inspector, but but myself working on the project, our engineers working on the project. When those questions come up, they're going to be able to go to us, and then we can relay with KPFF or whoever the the case may be going forward. So, there will be hands-on deck as far as the city working on it. So, I do see that 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 could be some some cost savings.
Yeah, and I, the the other thing that I, I just wanted to make sure that, you mentioned it earlier, I think, to reiterate it, it's important for small businesses downtown, there's several along the First Street Parking Lot, but leading up to Laughlin Street, between Federal and, I'm blanking on the streets to the west of Federal. Gosh. It, it, yes, thank you. There's several small businesses there. And I'm concerned about their ability to continue to, you know, move some of their vehicles and people and things like that. So, definitely interested in seeing what the plan is, you know, it as it progresses towards execution, what the plan is to ensure that they have access to some of the lots and things. At some point, they'll have to just sort of deal with it, right? So, we can, we can put in some of the other infrastructure and streetscaping that needs to take place. But just wanted to to keep that in mind and and I know you'll get the word out to those folks as needed.
Yeah, it's, I appreciate the point. We have already kind of drafted up a brief, like, you know, somewhat of a traffic control plan that we have been, we've been working with the owners of the hub building and mentioning to them that we potentially will close down Federals or First Street through the life of the project. So, our Public Works team has put together kind of just an overall sketch of what we think could, you know, how how the flow patterns could work over in the area. Also, when I was talking earlier about some modifications that we may make to the First Street Parking Lots, we are talking about potentially, there's the islands that are in the First Street Parking Lot temporarily. We're talking about potentially removing portions of those islands while construction is happening, so people can still maneuver throughout those parking lots. And then, once the project is complete, we would install the islands back in. So, it allows for, you know, basic, because like I said earlier, you access those parking lots from First Street. So, you can, of course, do it from the alleyway, but we would, we, we've designed this, this overall concept that you could access all those parking lots from the alleyway and still have the maneuverability in there. So, yes, it's, it's definitely something that is is top of our concern and making sure that we're reducing the overall impacts the best we can to surrounding businesses.
Okay. And the, some of the pilings and things like that, that you mentioned that need to go around the, to support the sidewalk around the Baldwin Building, is, I imagine at some point, you'll have an estimate of some sort of like access or traffic plan. I know, you know, the the current operators at Baldwin, I think, have done a wonderful job bringing that back. And it's, it's been a pretty vital part of the downtown as well that I've, I've noticed over the last year or so. I imagine there'll be a similar access or not necessarily a traffic plan because it's a sidewalk, not really the street. But I, I would imagine you'll have something in the future for that, for that sort of, that might be a little more difficult, I would imagine, but you'll have some sort of draft for that.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's some coordination. You know, thankfully, it's not a road that's lined with buildings all the way down First Street with access. So, so there are a couple that we have to work with, and we'll have, you know, temporary pedestrian access route plans that are put together with right-of-way construction projects. But yeah, we'll be working, as it gets closer, we'll be working with those property owners. We've talked to the owners of the Baldwin. You know, early on, we're moving through this right-of-way easement process. They had the questions about how this is going to impact business because that streetscaping is going to come down, like, you know, Council Runyon pointed out a little bit ago, it's, it's going to be coming down that half, half-length of the street itself. So, we'll be able to hopefully route people over to those new sidewalks or the new parking lots that we just paved out over in the Chinatown area. So, it was, yeah, it's definitely a top of our, top of our mind to keep business moving, keep, keep people coming. First, a one-year project in our downtown, we need to be very careful with, so we're not deterring people from coming to the downtown area in that period of time.
Awesome. Thanks. Look forward to seeing it move forward.
I'd like to add two, two additional highlights in terms of some of the construction impacts and things to be mindful of that we've had some discussion around is access to the Maritime Terminal and the cruise ship dock, again, with the First Street Project, Federal Street and and another project further down on Barge Way. And we've had some initial conversations to make sure that we're taken into account in supporting the Chamber of Commerce and the Cherry Festival as well. So, we're trying to make sure that we're having all those conversations as far in advance as possible, so we can come up with the best alternatives.
Any other questions for?
I'd like to clarify real quick. That 600,000 for construction admin, about half of that would be for someone to be there nearly every day. So, not necessarily all of that 600,000 could be shifted over one way or the other. But that there'd probably be the other half for the technical reviews of structural archaeology, archaeological and civil and geotechnical during construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, because I was starting to realize if I'm in the wrong business here. So, thanks for that clarification.
You're, you're in the right business.
Okay, any other questions for the staff or consultant? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Josh.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Very good, comprehensive report.
Thank you.
Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Interested citizens are required to sign up in advance to be recognized. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested and the response is not immediately forthcoming, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. We have several signed up. First of all, Mr. Bill Lennox, would you please come forward, state your name and address? And is the clock working tonight? Three minutes?
Start it till I sit down.
Okay.
Now. Hello. I'm here, my name is Bill Lennox. I live at 1005 Federal Street in the Dows. And I'm here basically to do a couple of things. First of all, I want to commend our mayor. He started a group called the Beautification Committee, and then he changed it over to Beautification and Shade Tree Committee, from what I understand. So, one of the things I want to bring up is that one of the slides that we saw showed a lot of pictures of the First Street area. And if you notice, there was one slide that had absolutely no trees on it. And then, there were a couple of slides that had trees, and they were quite nice-looking tall trees. And I just really want to remind this important part about our community and how it once was a town full of trees. The sycamore trees were planted here, you know, probably over 100 years ago, because the folks that first came here recognized the beauty of the trees and how they provide shade and how important they are. Unfortunately, though, as time has gone on, the trees have grown. And one particular area has to do with the area on Washington Street between Fourth and Fifth, right up there by the Christian Science and Bill Dick's Law Office. Believe it or not, once there were beautiful sycamores all up and down that particular piece of street, and they came through and they took them down because they were damaging the sidewalks. I believe they went back, Bill Dick probably, and they replanted it with maple trees. Well, lo and behold, those are the maple trees that now grown, and they've actually started to tear up the sidewalks again. So, the other day, I happened to be out and about, walking in Portland, and I noticed that they'd been pretty creative about how they can build sidewalks around trees. And by basically just sort of working around with the tree, not all trees, I mean, obviously, there's some issues that we have to look at, but many times you can sort of accommodate the tree, save it and can live for another 30, 40, maybe even 50 years, and providing the shade that we really all really covet. And I, just by thinking a little bit differently about how to approach the problem. So, that's what I'm here to do. I'm really here to just encourage a little bit of thought processes. When we go about deciding about whether we're going to just take down a tree, I realize that much of this has to do with the property owner, because sidewalks are kind of this property owner responsibility and the trees. But it's also one of the things that when the city comes out to advise, to decide whether they're going to permit it or not, they can also say, you know, maybe you could do it this way, or maybe we could do it that way. And that's really what I'm here to do. I'm just planting that seed, so to speak, to say, you know, there's some, maybe some other ways. So, one of the things I did, and I'll leave this for the office over there, is I took a couple of pictures showing the damage over by, am I running out of time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just leave this with them.
That'd be great.
And you can look at that. Thank you very much.
Thanks. You brought up a lot of great points, and I'd like the courage of the staff to follow up. Thank you, Bill. You mentioned the fact that the Beautification Committee was started here, and I think in my six years of mayor, I've probably appointed 60 or 70 people to different committees. And if I remember correctly, you were the very first person ever appointed to a committee. So, thank you very much for your service. Okay, next is Kevin Ryan. And Julie?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, and Julie Ryan, my wife, uh, just sitting here alongside me. Um, I, I did give you a correspondence, uh, again, a follow-up from my last presentation two weeks ago. Uh, I was told that I might not need to come tonight, but I didn't feel like that was appropriate. I wanted, um, you to get a follow-up from, from Julie and I. So my follow-up details, um, my letter details the follow-up points that, uh, Mr. Chandler and I and Julie had discussed. So the, the main ones is the, on our permitting process, uh, I was petition, petitioning a existing non-conforming business provision. And, um, so Mr. Chandler described to us that that would put us back into a 2020 ordinance. Uh, so there was 2020 ordinance revision and then a 2024 ordinance revision. And if we go back to the 2020 ordinance, um, there is a, um, that ordinance, uh, gives us a, uh, a waiver on the first bedroom, uh, off-street parking spot. So we no longer have to meet that. So, uh, we end up with, um, our home is four bedrooms. We end up with three, three additional or three bedrooms, not that we would still need off-street parking for. And then Mr. Chandler also in my notes, uh, said that he would be satisfied with using, uh, recognizing our garage as the, um, off-street parking for Julie and I. And so that, that would resolve our, which is still in the 2020 ordinance that the owner operator needs to have off-street parking. So just to remind you, we had an issue of having to have six off-street parking spots. And, um, so now we're down to three. We had a pre-existing agreement with our neighbor that Mr. Chandler said that we would need to re-establish through the new permit, which is fine. We can try to do that. But, uh, if that were so, then we're down to two off-street parking spots that we need. Correct. Um, so, uh, and we have one on our driveway. So that still leaves a short of one off-street parking spot. So we're down to three bedrooms instead of four, um, with that arrangement with our neighbor, uh, agreeing to extend with no liability to them, no, um, you know, binding agreement. It's just good neighbor agreement.
I just want you to.
Oh, okay. So, uh,
He won't count that against you.
She's always helped me. Um, so yeah, the, we will, as I said in my note, um, I just wanted to follow up with you so you can follow our process. Um, Julie and I are certainly, uh, good faith basis collaborative spirit with Mr. Chandler, trying to resolve our permit issue. Um, we are going to solicit our neighbor to see if we can redo that agreement. Uh, but we'll still be one bedroom short, uh, with that agreement. Uh, and if we don't get that agreement from them, I don't know. Uh, but then we're, we're down to permitted for, to only operate two bedrooms out of four, which essentially puts us out of business. So.
Okay. Well, uh, sounds like you did have some productive meetings with Mr. Chandler. I appreciate that. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. or Mrs. Ryan?
What about the historic, uh, looking for new local historic properties? Is that a possible alternative?
We're, we're going to look into that. Um, our home, uh, is on the original Fort Dells property. Our home was the stables of the prop, of the Fort Dells. Uh, and so that would, you know, in a way qualify us for, to be considered. Uh, Mr. Chandler did us a nice favor of kind of explaining the difference between a federally recognized property, historic property, a state-recognized historic property versus a local historic property. And the restraints on a local historic property are much less than what you'd have to qualify state or federal.
Did you repeat that?
Yes.
Did that last sentence?
The requirements to qualify for a local recognized historic property are less stringent than the state or a federal.
Great.
The only, um, Mr. Chandler said that, uh, they really only look at the outside of the home, uh, and not really in the inside of the home, though we've tried to keep it period as well on our inside, our, our remodeling. The only, uh, uh, exception to that would be that we have modified one aspect of the exterior of the home, but that would be it.
Who would be the, uh, agency that would, uh, approve or deny that request? Local, local request for history?
There's a, a commissioner board that Mr. Chandler had told us about that he's going to help us connect with, uh, to engage in that process to see if we would qualify. All right. Um, the other aspect of it is our home is a, uh, 1918 home and it's actually a Sears and Roebuck catalog home. So we have, you know, back then, uh, they'd give you, you bought the plans to the home and then they would deliver all the windows and the doors, uh, and trim. And so that's all original.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's good.
Uh, Council Runyon.
Hang on.
There I go. I got it. Uh, no, I just wanted to comment. I read the letter earlier today, Ryan, and I'm just, uh, very pleased that there's a positive effort going on to, uh, help, let's say, get this interesting issue resolved. So you can go on as before. You've, you run a very good operation. And so thanks to, uh, Josh Chandler, our planner and, and whoever else is helping to work on it. Good job. Let's, let's get this done. Yep.
Yeah. Just thank you for the time that you took at the last meeting and listening and, and giving input. Really appreciate it. And Mayor Mays, then your, um, connection with Mr. Chandler. So we really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chandler's supervisor is actually the city manager. So. Okay. Thank you all for coming. And, uh, I'm sure between you and, uh, Mr. Chandler and Mr. Klebs, you'll keep us informed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Finally, we have Javier Calteno. Call, is that, did I pronounce that correctly? Close? Caltenko, yeah.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Javier Caltenko. I'm a Public Information Officer with the Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Uh, SBA is providing low-interest federal disaster loans to homeowners, renters, nonprofit organizations, and businesses of all sizes who were affected by the Ruena wildfire that occurred between June 11th and 19th. We, we have two different types of loans that we are offering to the businesses and nonprofit organizations. One is for any physical damages that they had. Uh, this includes real estate, machinery, equipment, supplies, and other similar things. There is a limit of $2 million. We also have the economic injury disaster loan to businesses and nonprofits, uh, with a limit of $2 million. And this can be used for any liability that the company may have. We want to make sure that they keep their doors open. And for, just to give an example, they can use this for, uh, payroll, water, rent, mortgage, et cetera. For business, I mean, for homeowners, we have up to $500,000 to repair or replace their primary residence. We also have up to a hundred thousand dollars to repair or replace any personal property for homeowners and renters, uh, that could, that they can be used for like a personal vehicle, uh, appliances and even furniture. We opened a disaster recovery center at the, the glory, sorry, at the Gloria Center. So we are, we have the staff there that we can help, uh, any survivor, if they have any questions, if they have, uh, they need to apply, we can help them there. We are there to help. Uh, and the center is open Monday through Friday, nine to 6:00 PM. We, as of now, we do not have any, any approvals yet. It's only been a week, about a week. Uh, we probably will see something within the next week or two. And we do have some deadlines. We want to make sure that anybody who had any physical damages, they need to apply before September 15th. For the economic injury disaster loan, they have until April 16th of 2026 to apply. And that's all I have for now. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Caltenko?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, how many, I'm curious, um, are people utilizing your services? Um, are there, you know, a handful of applications or are people, uh, you, do we need to get the word out as this is, as this is another resource, uh, for folks, uh, you know, post-mortem from the fire?
Uh, yes, we, we have had some applicants. So some people who come in, they answer, they ask questions. So we actually, we are trying to get the word out so they can come in, they know about the center, so they can come. And, and even if they feel like they may not need the assistance, we still encourage them to apply because they have six months to decide whether they want the loan or not. Uh, one of the things I also forgot to mention is that the first 12 months is 0% interest rate. And for the first 12 months, they don't have to, they're not obligated to make any payments. Uh, the loans can go up to 30 years as well. Right.
Counsel Runyon?
Yeah, just to follow up there. I know the, uh, the county website has a lot of this information on it already. And I have not looked to see if we at the city have put this information on our city website. And if we haven't, we should have it right on the front page.
Uh, just a couple of comments there, Mr. Mayor. I know the Dallas Area Chamber of Commerce is pushing some of this information. We've posted this information on some of our social media platforms, but we are also trying to encourage people to go to the Wasco County website directly, um, to, to make sure that they have that kind of one-stop location to get the updated information. So we're pushing awareness of this information, uh, but trying to encourage people to, to go to that, 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 that one spot, the Wasco County website as often as possible. That's going to be the best place for your most up-to-date and consistent information. Um, and so we're, we're doing what we can on that front.
I guess my thought would be then to at least have a, a arrow, so to speak, that tells people to contact the Wasco County website on our site as well. Um, anyway, just a thought.
Mayor Mays?
Counsel McGlaughlin?
I've been working with the county on, um, donation coordination and I will take your information to my team and so we can get the word out. That's one of the serious questions is how are we going to rebuild? Once we get to the point of rebuilding, how do we provide the donations that are, cause they're not coming in right now, but we're working to store them and then have a date that we can go ahead and semen, disseminate all of that out into the public. So I'll pass your information on.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin, is that the, your, your team is the Lions Club?
I, I'm working with Wasco County and the Lions Club, yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Caltenko? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members.
Item seven is city manager's report. Mr. Klebs?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have an update on, uh, Director Chandler's work, uh, engaging with Kevin and Julie Ryan, but we just basically got that update. So I'll skip over that one. Um, as I mentioned previously, there was some federal action, uh, that impacted the AmeriCorps program, uh, across the, the nation, uh, but also here home in Oregon with the specific RARE program, Resource Assistance for Rural Environments. Um, I'm hopeful that that program will continue next year, but, um, due to some of those decisions and impacts, uh, they are not placing RARE volunteers this year. Um, and so I'll be exploring with some other city staff, um, the potential activation of the city's fellow or fellowship program. Um, that's something that we've had here previously and it could be a way for us to bring in some resources this year, uh, to help with a variety of different projects. Uh, so I wanted to have that on the radar for you all. Uh, we had a Q Life Board meeting last week. Uh, they, uh, did, uh, submit a grant application to, uh, the BEAD Grant Program, which is Broadband Equity and Access Deployment, uh, Grant Program. Uh, so that's a very exciting project and I'm very happy that, uh, the new director there and the staff that they're bringing on board was able to get that application submitted. Uh, we had a community outreach team meeting last week, uh, preparing for our trip to Washington DC, uh, this September. And I wanted to note for everybody that, uh, you know, we awarded the Walker Macy contract at our last city council meeting for the Federal Street Plaza. And our next public ad hoc committee meeting is August 6th. Um, we're going to have two meetings in August, August 6th and August 20th, I believe. Um, and these are two pretty critical meetings, uh, for, uh, the ad hoc committee and any public who'd like to attend. We'll be working closely with Walker Macy and really getting, getting into the fine details and, and design so Walker Macy can move forward with, uh, construction documents and, and move that project forward, uh, to keep pace with First Street. Um, also additionally related to this, the mayor and I will be headed to Salem this Wednesday, uh, to present our, uh, this project as part of our grant application to the Oregon Parks and Rec Department, um, for a $1 million grant request. So keep your fingers crossed and wish us luck. And that's my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay. City council reports. We'll start on Zoom with Counselor Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, mine is short and sweet. I didn't have a whole lot going on since the last, um, uh, city council meeting. I was out of town for some personal things. Uh, but I would like to, uh, congratulate Counselor Richardson on his, uh, appointment to the board chair for.
Urban.
Urban renewal.
Yeah, urban renewal.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Runyon?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, actually there were two Q Life meetings, as I recall. One was a, a Zoom only on the 17th and then a regular meeting on, uh, the 24th about the things that, uh, our city manager talked about, who was there as well. On the, uh, I believe it was the 24th, also I had a meeting with, uh, Police Chief of the Dallas, Tom Worthy and, uh, his safety officer, um, for traffic. And it was concerning, and you may have heard of the rather tragic accident, high-speed, uh, car traveling up scenic drive to what I would call the old KODL corner and at such a rate of speed, missed the corner, hit a telephone pole which broke in half and fell across the street. Needless, needless to say, the entire neighborhood up and down the street was out there as power was lost and that sort of thing. Had a small grass fire ensued from a transformer about two blocks away that shot sparks. So I had a meeting, uh, with, uh, the police chief about some ideas regarding that stretch and myself and, uh, administrative officer for Wasco County, Tyler Stone, will be taking our, uh, our theories and, uh, our, our notices of information to the traffic safety meeting next month, I guess. There have been four cars totaled in the last five years on that stretch of road. This was just the most recent. The other one was within about the last six to eight months and one before that about five years ago. So it's a severe situation leading up to Kelly viewpoint and the things that go on there on a Friday and Saturday night. So we are working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGlaughlin?
Attended, uh, I was with you, Mayor Mays, uh, on radio KODL last Tuesday. I also attended a airport meeting. Um, and I noticed that the airport manager tonight, Jeff Renard, will give a talk, uh, on, uh, item number 10. And then I attended the governmental affairs last Thursday, uh, in the morning and, uh, unheard this guest speaker talk about DEI. That's my report.
Thank you. Counselor Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one item and that was on July 16th. I attended the swearing-in ceremony for Officer Rebecca Kimball with the Dallas City Police.
Counselor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you know, uh, since you are there, I also attended the swearing-in. That's always, um, a pleasure. And thank you, Counselor Randall, for doing that. Um, couple of other meetings and things of note, uh, traffic safety recently. Um, there was some discussion and concern about the electric bikes that are proliferating around town and. that are proliferating around town and, and the desire among that body to think about how to make some sort of recommendation about, about those. Did attend the urban renewal board meeting. Thank you, Counselor Ring. Congratulations there. It's possible I outrank the mayor now. I'll have to look at the org chart.
Can't have that.
At any rate, at the urban renewal board meeting, I will say there's two points of, of interest that you guys might want to know about. One is that we should have news of, I'm hoping we have some news of Tony's development and maybe next steps there within the next couple of months. And we gave the Basalt Commons folks a six month extension, and they tell us they will know whether they are a go within that period. So pay, pay, pay attention to that. That could be a big deal if it were to go forward. Let's see, I wanted to make note that our new large animal or sort of farmyard animal, animal ordinance went into effect earlier this month. Some of the folks with the short term rentals remind us it's really challenging to make good rules that apply to everybody. And we, we do our darndest. I know staff works really hard. And it brings to mind the wisdom or the need to maybe review our ordinances. Sometimes people help us by bringing them to us with, with issues. But I would say maybe in the case of the animal ordinance, maybe by the end of the year, we could just look and see if it's going okay. Or if it's been too large a burden, if we're missing anything, just, just some sort of review on that. Nothing terribly formal. I attended my first Cascade Columbia Housing Corporation board meeting this morning. I'm excited to be nominated to that by this body. And I would say that CCHC and its sort of parent organization, Mid Columbia Housing Authority, have a really ambitious set of projects. Recently started to become acquainted with those. They have 425 units under management around the gorge and 149 under construction. And another 198, I believe, that are being looked at for feasibility and fundraising. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty ambitious set of projects in the next several years. And I would also note that they have a variety of services for people that are either facing the risk of eviction or just trying to get into housing. And one in particular I thought was interesting. They have a, a down payment assistance for veterans trying to get into housing. And they have some funds for that. So if anybody is a veteran and looking to get in housing, I would say stop by their office on Third Street. I'm sorry, how about Second Street? Just about a block east of Inza Cafe.
Thank you. As far as my report, three items have already been mentioned. The interview on KODL, the Rebecca Kimball swearing in at the police station, and the community outreach team meeting. In addition, I attended a open house and business after hours at Sunshine Optic at the corner of Second and Washington on the 17th. I did a radio interview with Mark Bailey at KACI on the 22nd. And on the 23rd, I met with County Commissioner and Commission Chair Scott Hagee. I had a nice meeting with Scott. Okay. Item nine is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. We added just one tonight. First is the approval of the July 14 city council meeting minutes. Second is a resolution concurring with my appointment of Debbie Ferrer to the Beautification and Tree Committee and Rita Rathke to the Library Board. Third is a resolution authorizing a request for grant funding to conduct a development review audit of the city's land use and development review process. And finally, what we added tonight is consideration of authorization to order contract for the library's HVAC project. Do I have a motion or hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Counsel Ring and seconded by Counsel Randall to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or raise, or raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10A. Authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for aviation planning services at the airport. Mr. Jeff Renard is with us tonight.
Check to make sure. There you go.
How about now?
Yeah.
Hand it to live. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. In front of you is a, well, we've, we've made it to 15 years on our master plan, and we are required, we're supposed to have one every, every 10 years with the airport. And we are at a place where we've, we've selected Mead and Hunt as our preferred consultant out of four consultants who bid on the project. About an 18 month project and the, what do we get? We've got a negotiated contract price not to exceed $509,321 on, on this. Part of that is made up with federal FAA funds and $150,000 core grant that we have. And then we, we will have a 1%, basically a 1% match from city funds that are already budgeted. Project takes about, about 18 months. Some of them are taking a bit longer than that, but we're trying to get this one, the, going prior to, I'm trying to figure out how to word that. They want to do the Aegis work for the master plan prior to the, the leaves being back on the trees so they can actually get the contours of the, of the earthwork and whatnot and learning, learn something new on that one. I didn't realize that that was a, a critical timing. So I'm here to ask that, or make a recommendation, that staff recommendation, move to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement with Mead and Hunt Incorporated for aviation planning services at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport in the amount not to exceed $509,321 contingent upon Clickatuck County Board of County Commissioners. And which they have actually already approved that at their Tuesday meeting this week, so we are beyond that. And that would be my recommendation for you.
Any questions for Mr. Renard?
I have one.
Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Renard. What's the origin of the, the various grants? How did those come about? Do you know?
We have about, forgive me, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's about $300,000 from our AIP grants, which is the, we get $159,000 a year from the federal government just as a airport improvement process, I believe is the AIP. We did, we were gifted $50,000 from Myrtle Creek, another airport who had expiring funds that I've stuck my hand up many times to make sure that we've got opportunity and we've given away expiring funds that we don't have a project to do. Previously, we gave $6,500 to Hood River because they had, we had $6,500 that was just going to go away. So if we can redirect it, the favor gets passed back. The FAA actually had an, has an additional pool of money that they've put us to the front of, and we will have an opportunity to potentially gather funds from that. I did submit for $150,000 core grant from the state of Oregon, and we received it as well. And then with our match money.
Oh, good job. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion.
Mayor Mays?
Yes?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Mead and Hunt Incorporated for aviation planning services at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport in an amount not to exceed $509,321 contingent on Clickatuck County Board of County Commissioners approval and award of grant funding as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counsel McGlaughlin and seconded by Counsel Ring to authorize the city manager to execute a agreement with Mead and Hunt for aviation planning services. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To Renard. Item 11A. Consideration of an ordinance amending our municipal code relating to noxious vegetation. Mr. Kara?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. I'd like to invite our codes enforcement officer, Nikki Lessig, to come on up in case counsel has any particular questions. Hi, Nikki. All right, so by this point, I'm sure everybody here knows the deal. Time to time, codes and coordinates with the city attorney's office to support our enforcement efforts around our city. We review and enhance provisions of our code for legal sufficiency and ways to improve the administration. Most recently, codes identified an increase in the number of repeat violations of our noxious vegetation ordinance that occur on the same properties within a one year period. That has placed a disproportionate administrative burden on our enforcement abilities. The bottom line, and I'm sure codes can explain with some particularity if needed. Some property owners seem just fine with our current administrative penalties associated with violating our noxious vegetation ordinance. Effectively, that makes the city a property manager serving their properties for abating these noxious vegetations for, you know, anywhere from $100 to $250 for our first offense. And it already currently escalates to $250 through to $500 for more than one offense. And so in an effort to deter repeat violations and lessen that burden on these problem properties, the proposed ordinance before council tonight would increase our court's authority as described on page 116 of your agenda packet. For first violations, a fine of $165 would be the presumptive fine, and a presumptive amount is the default amount. And so I have a little explanation paragraph on this page 116. Basically, if the court finds someone's first violation is the result of some sort of, you know, benign oversight, like they were traveling abroad for a month and they simply forgot to coordinate their own yard trimming, the court would have the authority to impose a penalty of that presumptive fine of $165. But in other cases, somebody could receive their first violation after our codes enforcement division informs them of ample notice and an opportunity to correct that nuisance on their property. The court would also have the discretion in that case, even though it's somebody's first violation in a calendar year, to find good cause to impose a penalty of up to $500 for that violation. So it gives the court some good discretion to make decisions on case by case bases for effectively just problem properties. So going back to what this ordinance effectuates, the first violation, the base would be 165 and it goes up to $500. Second violation in a 12 month period, the base would be 265 instead of 165, and it goes up to $1,000. And for third or more violations in a calendar year, the base would be 440. It goes up to $2,000 per. Happy to answer any questions or open the floor for Ms. Lessig to provide more information as needed.
Any questions for the staff?
Yes, I do.
I believe Counsel Runyon had his hand up first, and then we'll go to Counsel McGlaughlin.
You bet.
Oh, just for the public that may be reading the documents for the first time. Page one of two, page 115 of 125, first paragraph. Give me a brief explanation of legal sufficiency. Jonathan?
Legal sufficiency review is to ensure that our code is consistent with the city's current practices in Oregon and federal law and all other types of applicable law that the city is subject to. Typically, in the codes enforcement world, that means we're, we're balancing somebody's right to use their property versus the public's right to not have to suffer as a result of that use of their own property. And in the context of noxious vegetation, it means somebody is, or it means that the city's code appropriately finds that certain conduct on, or failures, failures to act on somebody's personal property, that the city is balancing that right without interfering with their constitutional or other property rights.
And the other definition I was looking for in the third paragraph, government, governmental efficiencies.
Yeah, governmental efficiency is the, ensuring that the city's administration is being used to the maximum degree possible to ensure that the public gets the most bang for their buck for staff time, staff and, and staff resources that are being used to, you know, throughout our city of 16,000 plus people being used in the right way. And so that tax dollars are optimized to get the, the most, the most available opportunities to be spent appropriately.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
The penalty would be in addition to abatement. So for example, if a person does not, or they're negligent, and we have the property abated, would this also be on top of that?
Correct. So there'd be the abatement cost plus the $500 administration fee that we have currently going on. And then if they're, if they fall into the category of repeat, then this would be an additional charge to add to it for the lack of responsibility to manage their own.
Understood. Thank you.
Can I just jump in and just double check? Do we have a $500 administrative fee for noxious vegetation, or is it only for junk?
We do have it for noxious vegetation, but I, I believe that we've just used it for junk.
I see.
So that it doesn't supersede. It used to be that vegetation was such a low cost to manage that adding a $500 fee sometimes was more than what it actually costs to abate the property. But now, in the last 10 years, it's superseded that, that the abatement clearances are very, that can be very high because you have, you could have blackberry bushes, you could have tree of heaven, you could have, you could have goat head. And so it just adds multiple layers of vegetation. In comparison to Hood River, Hood River, if they, if we had an abatement and it cost $2,000, their, their surcharge, they refer to it as a surcharge, is 50% of that abatement. So we are well under the, the cases that I work on. They're usually two, three, sometimes 4,000, up to $4,000, and we're not charging them 50% of the abatement. We are charging a set fee here, not a percentage of the cost of the abatement.
Historically speaking, I know that you have gone out of your way to ensure that everyone is communicated with and had every opportunity to modify. So I, I have no problem holding people accountable. The bottom line is deter them from unsightly, obnoxious vegetation. So I'm in favor of this.
Counsel Ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm curious, two questions. Counsel McGlaughlin had my first one answered. This is for, so first, second, third violation is in a calendar year. What if somebody is, you know, in, say, an annual, in annually in violation of it? So they're outside of the, the, you know, 12 month, you know, time window, so to speak, but once a year annually, they seem to, we, we, we find it necessary to abate their property for vegetation, noxious vegetation.
Want me to answer that?
Yeah.
That, that, once a year, that's just a, a normal abatement. You get your letter with, with a reinspection date. If the reinspection date is fail, you get a posting for two weeks. If you do not respond within that two weeks and correct it, then that's when the city brings a contractor in, and we do the abatement and apply the fines and bill them.
Okay, so this would be, sorry.
So I, I think I know, I think I know what you're trying to get to, Counsel Ring, which is can we just keep a running tally of certain properties and start increasing the penalties? If they're only violating the, the ordinance once per year, but it's consistently. ordinance once per year, but it's consistently every year or for a series of years, which is beyond the 12-month window? Is that, is that generally the gist? It gets tricky. At some point, at some point, you know, these kinds of non-criminal violations fall off your record in lots of different avenues in our life. For example, you can get, you know, a speeding ticket every year, but then after you're, let's say, not getting any speeding tickets for, I think it's seven years, something like that. Those tend to fall off your record in such a way that, that maybe your, your annual insurance premium won't be as adversely impacted by it. The reason that those kinds of fall-off periods exist is because at some point, it becomes governmental overreach to sort of penalize somebody for something that happened so long ago in such a terrible way. With all that said, part of, and we certainly could explore that idea, just to get that out of the way. We could. I'd have to look into a couple of different constitutional issues. But I think a much safer approach is to allow, if that was to happen, would be to give the municipal court the, the authority and the deference that this proposed amendment gives, which again, for somebody's first violation in a calendar year, is $165 is the base. But depending on the circumstances, the municipal court has the authority to change that to $500 for their first offense. And so it's not quite the same as an escalator, but the municipal court will remember if somebody's in there every year, we have a court docket, and even though we're not a court of record, we can still track those kinds of things. And so maybe it gets to what I think you're, the point of your question is, in a sort of roundabout way, but it basically puts that, puts that into the courts. The ball would be in the court's hands. Does that make sense?
Sure. And, and then lastly, my, my last question, what's, is there an estimate or is there any way to forecast what this, you know, is this, do we believe that this will reduce or, you know, reduce staff's time to have to manage these types of things? And I guess even before that, how much time is this consuming? Right? There's a reason we're doing this, right? It's because we, we have apparently repeat offenders around town, and it would be good to, you know, sort of disenfranchise them or incentivize them, I guess you could say, to not be a repeat offender throughout the year. Is there an estimate of what it has taken and what that, what the reduction in staff time might be so they can focus on other more serious code violation?
There's approximately 25 to 30 cases that are in the basically roundabout where they just, every few months, every six months that they are having basically vegetation issues, sometimes junk. I have received comments over the years of when someone gets their letter and they call and confirm that they're going to be working on it with a statement of saying, I've been waiting to receive your letter before I actually sent my crew out. So that's kind of a confirmation that they're using you as a, a monitor, a manager of your property and to maintain it. That's with someone that's cooperative. If you don't have someone that's cooperative, then then I, in the past, for other kinds of things such as abandoned vehicles, once you start towing, once you start penalizing, it really only takes one time and they kind of fall in line. With the fire, fire hazards and vegetation, we worked extremely hard this year to get all the vegetation down that we could. And working with the fire department and the county and looking at sites where we can work together. And an interesting note that I thought you might be entertained by is that one inspection that I did up at Scenic and Scenic Lane, it's just past the college and before the, before the cemetery. And there was some lots that are up there that have very high vegetation, very close to some very, some homes. And they were concerned, contacted the property owners, and when I went up to inspect, it was beautifully done. And to my surprise, because it was quite steep on all of those different lots. But they had hired a goat herding company to come in, and they had about 20 goats on there and that were very happy and healthy, and they had cleared the whole area and there was nothing, there was not anything in that field at all to create some kind of fire hazard. So I discussed this with the fire department and also at Wasco County. We have like a team meeting once, once a month to talk about different things that we're working on together, things that we can manage or, or improve our ordinances. And this was one that I brought to the table, and the fire department's interested in working with the city and the county to look into some areas that may not be within the city, could be in, in the huge urban growth boundary, also could be in county, also could be in the Mid-Columbia Fire District, but just be working as a, a community as whole without boundaries to address this dry, tall vegetation that has taken so many homes so far.
Any other questions for the staff? Council Randall?
You mentioned three of the varieties of noxious vegetation. Is there any one that's like more prevalent than others or more difficult to get rid of?
Uh, puncture vine, goat head. Yes, it's, it's a monster. It wants to, it wants to stay. And it grows very, very quickly. Tree of Heaven also does as well. It replants itself quite quickly. And that involves neighboring, neighboring properties that don't want to have to take care of that. So Tree of Heaven, but primarily the puncture vine goat head, that is the biggest.
Unless they stay on top of it, they can actually have a recurrence within a year, show a recurrence, goes, it grows back that quickly.
I could bore you with the history of that, and they can, the seeds can stay dormant for up to four years. So you may think you have it for three and a half years, and then the, the fourth year it pops up. You just have to be diligent.
I, I will say, just on the other side of that, or on some facet, puncture vines miserable. Having encountered it in various ways over the last few years, there's a big lot in my neighborhood. And just as Joe's citizen, I've noticed that it has had, for the first time in the 20 years I've been there, had puncture vine just kind of erupt two years ago and then last year. But it's totally controllable. You know, it takes me an hour to go out there and just take care of it. And, and it's done for the year. So it's, it's unpleasant, but it is controllable. On a, you know, limited scale anyway.
Anybody else?
So I'll just say, just in response to, you know, council's in question from earlier about how effective this might be, you know, if it's not as effective as we'd like it to be, or we think it could be, the city can always reconsider this ordinance as part of maybe a more comprehensive legal sufficiency review to increase these penalties. At some point, it's going to be too expensive for people to ignore this. That's the, that's the idea. And so again, with these sorts of targeted types of ordinance amendments, we're really only targeting the bad actors. I mean, the people that are complying with our ordinance as it is, you know, they're not really going to be impacted at all by whether we increase the third violation at $10,000, right? I mean, they're not going to get to the first violation. And so again, we're, I think we're pretty optimistic, though. These numbers look okay to me.
Also, those citizens that respond to the first letter.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Anything else?
Did want to, did want to answer Council Ring's question. He asked how much more time this maybe would add to staff. The savings of having to do a whole new abatement or a whole new process there, that's where the savings is. Majority of the time would, would be reduced because you're not going through that process. The time that doing it this way, and they'd have to go through the judicial system, it's more the time sitting in court and having a judge, as long as you're presenting your case, your, your case should be strong and, and there shouldn't be a, a problem with the, with the judge. And but, you know, like our city attorney has said, there's people that have stories and there are people that tell stories, and if they have stories, I'd like to hear about it. And that can make a difference in your, in your judgment, whether you're a judge or a codes officer.
Anything else? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to adopt general ordinance number 25-1416 as presented by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Removed by Council Richardson and seconded by Council Randall to adopt this ordinance in regards to noxious vegetation. Is there anyone in the city council who would like to see the ordinance or hear the ordinance read it in its entirety?
No.
Hearing none, will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
General Ordinance Number 25-1416, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Dow's Municipal Code, Chapter 5.24, Noxious Vegetation.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Host. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor, thank you. Thank you for always listening to everything that I say.
Thanks for helping keep our city more attractive, so we say. Finally, we have item 12A, which is the city manager will now give us a progress update on the 2025 City Council Goals, Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, the city council adopted the 2025 City Council Goal and Action Plan following a facilitated retreat that we held November of 2024. This is something that we've done the last couple of years, working with Sarah Singer-Wilson or SSW Consulting. And again, what we plan to do later this year in November, again, with SSW Consulting. One of the objectives, I think, for this November's session is to look beyond kind of 12-month time period and try and push us towards a more three-to-five-year kind of strategic plan. And so as part of that process, want to make sure that I'm giving you some updates. And one of the specific questions I'm hoping to get some feedback or hear some discussion from the city council are, in addition to, you know, how the goals and strategies are worded and how they're resonating with you, but also how myself and staff are reporting on our progress? And what are some appropriate and effective metrics to be using to be monitoring that progress and make sure that's aligned? Discussion today and that, and at an additional update later this year will help inform that November session. And so here in your, in the council packet is a brief staff report. This is something that I informally updated council on during a city manager's report earlier, earlier this year, but wanted to bring a more formal document to you. And so on page, starting on page 120, we have each of the six city council goals touching upon livability, housing supply, houselessness, fiscal sustainability, infrastructure and public relations. On the left column, you'll see each strategy that we've prioritized for this year to fulfill elements of each of those goals. The center, center column is a brief update, and then the right column is anticipated next steps. This has been included in your council packet, so I'm not going to take the time this evening unless you really want me to, to go through each of the strategies, but I'd like to highlight a few of them. At the top of my list is moving forward, as we talked about earlier this evening, with the Federal Street Plaza. This is a project that we've been talking about for many years, and we've awarded the Walker-Macy contract. We'll be having a kickoff meeting, actually tomorrow morning, with some city staff and moving that project forward. We've had a kickoff meeting for the CAD RMS project. This is the new infrastructure and software updates related to our police department. And we'll be pulling together a city internal team meeting to make sure we can move forward effectively and efficiently and engaging with our partners to deploy that system. We have an economic opportunities analysis and buildable land inventory work session on mid-August. As Counselor Richardson mentioned during his council report, he is now one of our representatives on the Mid-Columbia Housing Authority Board, and we received his first update today. We've gone through an extensive process to review our transient lodging tax, transient room tax ordinance, going through and procuring the Dow's Area Chamber of Commerce for our tourism promotion services. And we'll be taking a closer look likely in September or maybe October, October, on the local grants program that we have here and really bringing some refinements ahead of the next budget process. We started the work on the wastewater master plan update and have completed or are nearing completion of the digitization project for all of our city records, which is, which utilizes some one-time ARPA funding and really represents a great opportunity to preserve and keep those records, but also make them more accessible and usable by staff. So those are some of the highlights. There's a lot of work represented in this document. This really guides the budget process and guides the efforts and direction for myself and city staff. It is also not all encompassing. This also misses a lot of work that we do on a day-to-day basis and doesn't encompass all of the work, but really is that embodiment of the city council's priorities and focal points. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you, you may have on any of the strategies or clarification on any of the updates or anticipated next steps. But I think my, my specific question here is again, on, on some of the metrics or how this report works for you and how it can be as useful as possible. You know, some of the strategies, in particular, if you look on page 123, Fiscal Sustainability, 4.3, we have maintain an unappropriated ending fund balance equal to four months operating at a 10% contingency. The update that that has been completed in our budget process and the next steps are kind of ongoing. And so I just use it as an example that, that may, that, that's a good strategy to have, a good objective. But once it's done, there's kind of a checkmark next to it, and is that really, you know, what you want us to be focused on and coming back to you and reporting on if it's something that's been completed or is simply, simply has an ongoing statement next to it? So I think I'll pause there, and like I said, happy to answer any questions you may have.
It seems to me that you have put a lot of work in developing this report, and once that initial work is out of the way, it wouldn't take a whole lot of additional effort to update us, which is the middle column, either through your city manager reports or just give us an update through reissuing this report with the updates attached. Am I?
That's, that's exactly my intention. You know, frankly, the staff report that comes with this will in essence be a stock staff report that I use. I will likely put it in as a discussion item, depending on the scale and scope of the update, but I'll likely put it in as a discussion item just for the time it takes on the, the, the agenda. But in, in essence, you're, you're correct. This, this report and kind of spreadsheet structure allows me to, you know, work, working with my department heads and other city staff to give you a really brief update on where we're at in a particular strategy.
And I especially would appreciate, and I know you've been doing this, I'm not sure the extent to which this council is satisfied, but in your city manager reports continually updating us on these items, certainly not all of them in one report, but one or two or three or whatever in each of your reports, your verbal reports, I think would be great. Council McGlothlin?
May I ask his question on 1.4? With the Mint Team reactivated and reformed, where are we in that process? Do we have it staffed?
I think the chief of police may be best to answer that one, actually, and he happens to be here.
Yeah, I'm happy. Is this on? Okay. I'm happy to speak to that. We're supporting the Mint Team. The Mint Team's currently staffed by two deputies, one from Wasco County, one from Hood River. And our night sergeant has quite a lot of experience in that area and is supporting that. And we met today with detectives internally to discuss the transition for them to add staffing to that as well. We're waiting for a couple of other metrics within the department, as well as a backfill to the general law detective in order to start to address that problem.
Define the acronym Mint.
Columbia Interagency Narcotics Task Force.
So we're on our way to renewing and have an acting force.
Yes, sir.
Good, excellent. Thank you.
Council Ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor McGlothlin beat me to my first question. It's like he's reading my notes or something.
Two for tonight.
I'm glad to hear that the Mint Team is back in activation. That's something that I, that's, yeah. I, I think it's been missed since, since its last participation and activation. But to, to our city manager's point, one of the things that I've spoken to him about in the past one-on-one is going into our November goal-setting session, I'd, I would just make a point to keep it in the back of council's mind to maybe delineate between things that are covered in ordinance, like our contingent, our, our. maybe delineate between things that are covered in ordinance, like our contingent, our, our contingency, four-month operating contingency in the budget process is already, I think, you know, adequately covered there, things like that. I, I do like that they're, these are measurable goals. They're smart gold, right? But I want to also make sure that we kind of balance the, the workload that our staff has with something that's also, you know, not sort of busy work, if you will, right? I, I don't think that there's a lot of that, but I think it, I think it's important to, to recognize it and think about that as we go into our goal planning session in November. That's all.
Thank you. Any comment?
I'm happy.
Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Thank you, Mr. City Manager for the report. It's useful. I think this, the, the annual strategy sessions that we've done are something we're still sort of feeling our, our way towards, or it's evolving over time as we, as we interact as a team. I, I've found it useful and encouraging. I hope others have. I hope you have. But I do think that we aren't entirely there yet. You know, we still have from time, a sort of a multiplicity of goals, some of which are essentially just policy, like your example about the contingency fund. Sort of, okay, that's what we do. We don't need to put that in the strategic session, in my opinion. In my view, the strategic planning session is sort of opportunity to look at significant projects that we want to budget for and essentially opportunity for the city to consider how to level up on various services or stretch goals, if you wish. Anyway, I've been pleased with it. Thanks for the report. I look forward to having this session in November and maybe it might be worth putting your thoughts down in a briefing session or in an email or, or something. You know, a few weeks ahead of time, just so that we can start thinking about what a, a three to five year look. You know, how we might want to approach that as opposed to the annual session that we've been looking for or we've been getting used to. Thanks.
Okay. Any other feedback for the city manager? Do you have any last comments, Mr. Klebs?
No, the city clerk and I will be meeting with SSW Consulting here in the next couple of weeks to start planning for that session and what that process may look like. You know, in years prior, we've had some one-on-one meetings or group meetings between the consultants and the city council. We've also met with our leadership team. And I think one of the things that we will endeavor to do this year is to have some kind of community component as well, a survey or, or something, some tool like that, similar to what we've used last year to gather input on various different items. And so I've seen that used in a couple of different communities. It's, it's quite the wide spectrum of comments and, and submissions that you may get. But we might trial that this year to also inform this process. And in particular, because we're going or trying to push for kind of a more long, longer term strategic planning output. So I may have some more information for the council after that meeting with SSW. And then, like I said, intend to give another update of some, some, some degree of formality ahead of that November meeting and we can continue this discussion. And, and I already also have kind of a running list of things that we've heard from the community or have been mentioned by different counselors to kind of populate some of the things we might consider moving forward. But appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the regular part of our meeting. And now the city council of the city of the DOWS will now meet in executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room or not attend. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in an executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome everyone back in the room. We expect a return to open session in about 45 minutes. So with that, we will